I can't commission regular reading and now come the order. We got to buy it in.
Our Father in heaven, we thank you for all the gifts that you give us on a daily basis. Father, we thank you for the beauty of this day, the fact that we got up and was able to enjoy it. Thank you for our freedoms that we enjoy, that we can reap and not be in fear of persecution. We ask that we continue to seek to do your will, that you will guide us down the path you would have us go to make the best decisions for the people of this county. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is changed, one nation under God, in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that one commissioner has out for the commissioner's warning. Need an approving of minutes from February 11th.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Barron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you oppose?
Mm-hmm.
Want to oppose? Okay. Approving of claims?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland. No one in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Engineer report.
Mr. Chairman, we would suggest just letting our new business items just roll down to current business. We don't have anything that requires action on that tonight that we'd ask you to suspend the rules for. Under current business, the first thing is the surplus equipment list.
Who's the chairman? Wait, Commissioner. I said. Motion by Commissioner Barron. Second by Commissioner Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then, under the short-term loan for the industrial access project, I don't know if you want actually deal with that under Mackenzie's report, but I do want to make one clarification. You know, we, the industrial access project or the industrial access funding that we received from the industrial access board was actually split up into two projects, just as a reminder. We've got the new road and then we've got some up to half funding the resurfacing of 7714. So, I just want to make clear, I guess in your, in your action, if you choose to approve this, that we can use that money on both of those projects. Because while the resurfacing project is a federal aid project, it'll be let through the state, we will have to pay the, for the engineering month by month and then get reimbursed like we normally do with federal aid projects. So, that will be a cost there that we have to kind of float along, just like the other industrial access projects. So, and then later, the third project, the CDVG resurfacing of 7714, you know, we've got that funding issue there with the EDA money. We don't know how that's going to work out. Usually, we can get a drawdown on a CDVG project and we don't have to front the money and it get reimbursed. So, if that changes or if we need some type of solution like this short-term loan on that project, then I'll come back to you later when we get to that point. I just don't know yet. But I wanted, if it's okay with you, I just wanted to clarify that we can use this short-term loan on both the industrial access projects already under contract and the federal aid combined industrial access project.
The only thing I would say to that to you is, let's make sure we take care of Rick Lumber and have him open on the date.
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely.
I know, I know, I know that, but you know, if they would rather go in to where the entrance is and make sure they have all their lanes, if that's what's more important, then that's the one we need to tackle first is all of them.
Right. It will be. It will be. It will be hopefully moved, you know, almost completed by the time the resurfacing problem lets.
I got you. All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take the lowest bid.
Okay. I have a motion.
That he has and that he gave us a, how long is it going to take you to?
How long's it going to take to?
If you have an idea of.
For the whole project?
Yes, for the whole project.
Well, the, the first project that's already under contract, the new road, probably will be, hopefully about three months maybe.
Well, I make a motion, and my, my motion is that County Commission give us a bi-weekend report on wherever you at.
How long is that motion?
Okay, yeah, that'll be in your project update that I give you monthly automatically if that's suitable for you.
Then you're going to get that at every meeting.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So, I do have a motion by Commissioner Harris.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Barron. Discussion, Commissioner Copeland.
I just want to make sure I understand, are we asking for a monetary update on how much is off this line of credit, how much has been paid back, or are we getting how much asphalt's down, how much of the roads there? Are we getting both, which? Both?
Project makes just physical work.
That's right. That's why I want to make sure we were clear with the engineer, it wasn't just the report that was already given.
Okay. Anybody here? So, I do have a motion and I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, and then, I also wanted to, that's all under my, under our agenda here, but I did want to kind of make one clarification about what Commissioner Johnson mentioned earlier. He's working on putting together a litter control program. And I just want to mention, you know, we, we got a call today from the folks down in Elba that we get our work release inmates from, and they're getting in some new people. And we have an opportunity right now to get more inmates than we've been, we've been trying to get three or four a day. So, we have an opportunity to add hopefully up to half a dozen to help pick up litter. And of course, we would need a new van or a van, some, some other type of vehicle to transport them in. But I just, I want to point out that I'm, I'm not sure how long these extra individuals will be available. So, just want to make that clear, you know, we could, we've been trying to find some more and it's difficult. You know, there's, there's really three sources within driving distance for us. And so, we've not been very fortunate finding any more than we, than we get now. So, I just want to make that clear. That's what we're, we're trying to put together something.
Did they give you a time of what your answer needed to be? Was it first?
SAP. Yeah. It's all they heard. Yeah. It's kind of first come, first served. So, I just wanted to point that out to you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean that there were step bounds or, but I just want to make sure you understand that we could come back to your next meeting and say, no deal, nothing's available. So.
Commissioner Copeland.
And I think I've got it from the flavor of y'all's conversation, but when you say not available, you mean some other business or county or?
City.
You will get them and hire them, not that it rotates so fast that you don't know if they're available. Because I guess the reason I'm asking is we're putting a whole program together, counting on being able to get them, and then, you know, six weeks, oh, never mind, everybody's gone.
Yeah.
But that's not what you're saying. What you're saying is the availability of the workforce.
Right. I'm saying it's first come, first served and that was, but that, your question is my, was my question to them and I was told that it would be a substantial amount of time.
I've got a, I don't, until I get spoken to back tomorrow with two other elected officials in the county, I don't, it would not be proper to talk about what we were negotiating over to make this work. The savings from the last meeting with bidding out the chief accountant, chief financial officer position will, is more than twice what this would cost for you. You know, there's a little more to some of this, and we talked about enforcement, I've talked with Representative Allen, a couple of us had about if, if the law went right today, could we do some kind of a local act to strengthen it and change the fine? You know, we're, it's an ongoing conversation about how to fix this problem if we've had countless people come in here, want us to do something over. I, I think I've got a couple of avenues to chip away at the cost of this, but the cost of this thing is going to be about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year to have a steady three-day-a-week trash pickup, county, countywide. How long?
Well, and that, what that's based on is, is covering the, that doesn't include the initial cost of another vehicle to transport. But that's, that's just covering the upkeep and maintenance cost and fuel cost of the vehicle just under the road department budget. So, the forty-five thousand would be an estimate of what it would cost to hire a part-time employee to supervise inmates three days a week, just pick up litter three days a week, and then of course, the cost of the inmates themselves. So, that's what that includes.
Yeah, that's one question, sir. We, we, we did this before and thinking, you just said, part-time employee to control the pickup stuff. But we couldn't hire a part-time person to deal with the prison and be able to be a full-time person there because they were going to get insurance and all this stuff. That's where it worked the last time when we were picking up litter with some of them and.
I don't know, but we've actually used some of our part-time employees to supervise inmates before, so I'm not aware of any reason now that we can't. That's been a while, but I think the program you referred to was before the time that I was the county engineer, so I'm not real sure about those details, but.
We didn't have a full-time person with, not part-time, but maybe, maybe this changed. I don't, I don't know. Maybe this changed.
There was a, let me add this, there was a question answered, right? There was a, there was a question or an issue, Mackenzie, you will remember, on garbage pickup, notwithstanding if it's, just say you had two employees full-time that you, that was their side, now they would fall under, I mean, they'd be an employee of the county, that if they got hurt or driving a truck, ran over somebody on the side of the road, you're in, they're, the county, you as commissioners, the county's, you know, you're covered under your liability insurance for employee, not since they've been employed. The snag we ran into, I remember there was a question about work release and something happened. Now, our insurance agent would have to go back over and explain what, explain this again, as to what, what issue there was, or maybe it's not now. And then the other one was any sort of county-sponsored litter pickup day, if you want to call it. They, they used to do that and then suddenly the counties, in our case, backed, had to back off because the insurance company came back with a decision, if you actually sponsor an event, don't we sponsor a mile? Y'all remember what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And I know you did because you know, you've been here a long time, we go way back from this, but if you sponsor like an event, then you're, you're liable for that event. And what happened is our insurance carrier at that time would not insure it.
That's.
So, we had to.
What was?
And that may not be the same.
Well, let me ask a question. What was, what would be the difference in what you're talking about in the past and PALS last year or PALS this year? Because that was a statewide county trash picking. I mean, would there be, there's no difference in the two of those, would it be?
I, I would simply add in the equation of getting it checked out, the, just the insurance question is all I'm, I even know my own.
Well, I've said this, so just since I've been here and Mr. Barron's been here, we went from not being able to get anybody at all, because now we can get to it. So, that changed, you brought that to us when we were able to get these people that we're getting now. Just, it's been within the last couple of years too.
Let me ask, I want to ask him a question and impose a question to y'all. If, if, if we were able to sit here and say, we can do this, what would the time, you would have to advertise for, an interview for, a part-time position to take them around and pick up trash. What kind of a timeframe would it take to, to make all that happen, a month, month and a half?
Well, as far as the supervisor, I would think.
I don't want to talk about temporary getting to that point, but here's my rational reason for asking.
Okay.
If I can convince these gentlemen that, hey, let's go and jump on this, we've got an insurance question, Commissioner Harris and the attorney would like to talk about, that we've got a timing issue with these six men. Or what I'd like you to find out in the morning, say it takes a month and a half to advertise for a position and interview for it, you made the comment to me, if we made this happen, you could have somebody in-house do the interim, getting them and dropping them off and watching them during the day. If I was able to convince them that we got the money to do this, deal with this problem, in the interim, prior to hiring a part-time person, we find out our insurance isn't going to cover our, you know, would we have any kind of issues with the prison system if you called back and said, hey, I can't insure this, I got to let these guys go? But they just go and pull them and give them some other municipality? You understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Because we've got the, the money, and I asked her briefly before the meeting, the money we cut, that eighty thousand dollars, half of that will pay this. I feel like I can cover, working with some people, probably half of that half, you know, around twenty, twenty-five. I'm working on getting twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year of it covered. If we can work something out for the legislature to change the fine structure of this and the enforcement structure of this, it may take, not this first year, but in subsequent years, that the dealing with dumps will fund the pickup. I mean, you're only talking about, what, fifteen thousand dollars a year is the cost of labor for the inmates? You know, and we've all sat here and beat our heads against this desk over and over with people calling us and begging us to do something about the trash. And we've talked about it ourselves, how unsightly this has gotten. And if we don't have, we saved eighty thousand dollars with that decision at the last meeting and we have, because we would still have half of that to put in a hole somewhere else. Man, if y'all would even consider it, if he's that worried about losing the people, you know, if there wouldn't be some kind of penalty to turning them back in if we couldn't insure the part-time person? I mean, I, I don't want to see this get away because it could wind up, it's, we went, we call Union Springs, Ventris, Kelly and the sheriff didn't even have enough people they felt comfortable about to help serve lunch in the jail the other day. And he pointed blanked, told me, I can't, I don't have six people I'd let them take out in the road. You know, so I don't, I, I will agree with Engineer, that needs to be gone lightly, that this could just be recreated in a month, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir. It's just like we said before, I can remember very good that we could not hire a part-time worker and send out with the prison. They wouldn't let us do it. They shouldn't, they wouldn't let us do it. So, we turned around, said, full-time, man, and we turned around and did, and they were picking up five or six prisons every, every day. We had a, we had a van that go down and pick them up. And I don't know what happened to that program.
When you talked with Jason, when you talked to Jason, did you ask him exactly how they had their front to set up and bullet him? And he does a little bit around.
I don't remember. I'll have to look back and get back with you. I don't remember that specific.
Because the difference in three days a week and four is another monster to.
If the insurance company will cover them, I'm, I'm getting further, you know, it's just something we got to do, you know, get there, and get to insurance.
Well, let me ask this. The cost of the, the cost of six inmates is two hundred and seventy dollars a day. If we, in this interim period, if you spoke for them tomorrow, how soon would you have to go start picking them up and paying for them?
She said, within about two, three weeks. I think she said at the end of the first or second week in March, somewhere during that timeframe, they could live with it.
If you spoke for them tomorrow and by the second week of March, we found out we couldn't insure them, then you can just say, hey, this didn't work.
We can call the, the insurance agent tomorrow morning.
Yeah, but it'll be two more weeks, that's that, before we're sitting back in this room again for you to tell them, you don't want these people gone, is my point. So, I, I guess what I'm saying, if, if we talk about this tonight and the insurance comes back and says, we will, would y'all consider a motion pending approval with the insurance company?
Yeah.
And if the insurance company comes back and says, no, it's got to be a full-time person, then we, I'm not going to have a way to upload the funding gap, but we won't miss out on those six folks.
And the other question is what to do about purchasing a van? We can get a new van off state contract for roughly twenty-seven thousand dollars. We're looking around to see if there's any other options. We're waiting, actually, we're waiting for a gentleman to call us back from Aldott Surplus this afternoon and we didn't hear back from him, so we're hoping maybe they would have something. They were showing on their system that they're, they had some coming up, but I don't know how soon they'd be available. So, we're looking at that option too, but a new one would be roughly twenty-seven thousand, equipped for, you know, pulling a trailer and, I think a fifteen-passenger van.
I mean, I think, I mean, has that put you on the spot too bad, as I've always said, we've talked about this?
Commissioner Copeland has some.
I was just going to say, we've been talking about this for two years, at least we have.
It's two thousand.
Y'all have been talking about it for all year. Fifteen, we've been talking about it for twenty-five. I mean, I know we've done things in the past and, you know, we, we said a couple, and last year, we want to tack this three different ways. One was education, we accomplished that last year, we got four H to get their program back in school. We got them to start talking about litter and environmental science in schools and get that program back there. Sounds like we've got a viable opportunity from everything I've heard tonight and before tonight. There's some moving parts, but, you know, I mean, nothing sounds, we're, can't overcome it. The savings that we got from, from this one move we made last meeting will cover the first year and upstart. And then next year, we're only looking operationally, having to use half of it, assuming we get enough funding here. But I'm.
And I'm, and I'm not going to give up on, I mean, I've had talks today about the funding now, and I'm, you know, session hasn't even started for another few weeks. And I think we got, you know, we've had talks about, we've talked with Mr. Allen about if there isn't a lull now, can we bring one into action and give the sheriff the authority with the cup of trucks and tickets and things for some of this and just clean it up? I mean, we've all, we don't even need to talk about that anymore. We all see, talking about honey berries and it's.
We know that, I mean, the whole point of us coming up with ways to save this money is to reinvest the citizens' money in a way that better reflects what they're wanting to see. I mean, we get calls about roads and we get calls about litter and then we get more calls about roads and more calls about litter, and that's probably ninety-nine point nine percent of what we get with our opportunity, probably. I mean, if you spend a whole lot of money trying to keep up the roads, this is a bargain discount if we can make an impact, assuming it all works out, so.
Well, if y'all, well, I'd like, when I get, it's not only a gym.
First, you spend the roof over.
I'd like a motion.
Can I make one caveat before you, before you vote on this? I cannot guarantee, like we said, the way, the way they operate is they have a pool of, of inmates that, that we draw from currently, they're fifteen dollars a day, that's what we're basing these numbers on. And that, those numbers do fluctuate, they do come and go. I was told that, that these individuals under that same part of the program would be available for, you know, a good long while, but no guarantee can be offered as, you know, how long they're going to be available. So, when you invest in the equipment and you hire the personnel to handle this, there's no guarantee that you're going to have a consistent year-round, half a dozen, you know, under this program. Now, I will say that the other way that they operate is they have a more, I don't want to say permanent, but they have a, a different pool that they use that people, they refer to it as hiring them. And I think it's seven dollars and fifty cents an hour is what you pay for the inmate. And my understanding is that those individuals hired in that way are more available, more consistently. So, you may get to a point in the future, three months, four months, six months, eight months, I don't know, may get to a point where we can't get six for fifteen dollars a day and we have to come back and revisit this and say, okay, we've got our van, we've got our supervisor hired, now let's reevaluate and see if we're going to have to pay these folks seven fifty an hour, how many do we want on our litter crew? You know, it, it's just going to be an ongoing thing with ups and downs that we're going to just have to manage.
The world's a moving target and that's just for the county.
Yes.
And the acts of the majority is, I don't want this to sound cold, but vehicles can be bought and vehicles can be sold and positions become open and positions become closed. And if it gets in a year where you can't get people from the prison system, then we'll make a, we'll make a decision to change it so that it's not as funny as it is, but I don't want to just, I don't want to ignore a chance to start tack, eat the elephant in the room because we're scared of what could happen in twelve months.
Right. And that's just my point exactly. I just want everybody to be on the same page and understand that, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
We're just trying to do something. The problem is so bad, you know, we're just trying to do something, like you've already mentioned that so many people, there's a lady in here tonight that has been picking up trash, litter on her road and is trying to get some litter signs put up. So, I mean, it's just a, an ongoing battle and we're just trying to do something about it. And, and it's not going to be a perfect scenario, just, just so we all understand that.
But what I'm.
And you're not looking at me, you know, in six months when I come back in here and say.
But what I'm going to expect out of you, whether I'm sitting here or not down the road, is when that van set idle for a month or three months and your part-time person hadn't anything to do because you hadn't been able to get an inmate from Ventris, Union Springs, Elba, Pike County Jail, that you're going to walk up here and say, hey, we need to kill this program because I hadn't been able to get an inmate for four months?
Right.
And, and, I mean, don't just sit on, you understand what I'm saying, but we've had a lot of those talks.
And if we have a gap, you know, if you have a, you can, you can tell me how much of a gap you're willing to tolerate, but if we have a gap of a month or two months or whatever, and we have a lull, you know, you don't, make no mistake, we can use that employee. I guarantee you, we can make use of it, but.
When I hired you an extra.
I know, I know. So, you tell me what gap you can tolerate and.
There's all kinds of ways.
Yeah, we'll, we'll adjust accordingly.
It may be that we fill gaps of these seven dollars and fifty cent an hour people for two months, so they get another boat, boatload of the fifteen dollar a day.
That's right.
I mean, there's all kinds of ways to put together a plan on something like this.
You got, that's exactly, that's.
We just, we just got to take the first step and get it together.
Yes. And I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, that that's how it, how it works.
Commissioner Copeland has some.
No, I don't.
That's it?
No, I don't want to.
I'd like to make a motion, spin the roofs if I'm willing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, suspend the roofs. It's been seconded by Commissioner Barron and it requires a roll call loop.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that pending approval by the insurance company that they will insure a part-time employee to supervise a litter pickup, that we allow Engineer to call Elvin and one to tell him, well, for six people for trash pickup.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Now, what about the van? Do you want us to buy new and off-state contract?
I, I say, won't you wait and let's get the insurance, not do anything with that till, if you can't pick anybody up till the middle of March, we need to smack all the insurance in the morning and make sure everything's okay and then we'll, we can tackle that the next meeting. We'll come in here, I'll sit down with you and we'll come up with a couple of different options. I would have had time to talk to some of these other parties that want the help and it may be if we cover the cost of this the first year, maybe they tie the van. I mean, there's some, let me, I'll, I'll have you answer that the next meeting, but I don't think we could buy a van in the night when we don't even know the insurance company.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Russell, I suggest we look at the state via the need of surplus. They got a lot of vans on that side that they turn in.
Right.
They've got low mileage and I think we could probably get a borrowing account.
Yes, sir. That's, we're, we're looking, we're actually waiting for a gentleman to call us back this afternoon and so I was hoping I'd have something to bring you about that.
I watch those equipment turn in to the state before they send to Montgomery and a lot of us not heard at all, they're at low mileage.
Good. What else?
And Russell, when you call back, if you're going to call back, so you can explain the details.
I will, yes.
If you know it better than anybody, so you can.
I'll take care of it.
What else we got? What do you do?
Do you have a start date yet for Montgomery on that A road, the new road? Because I was pressed very hard this morning, I'm just scaring those folks today. You know when they're going to break ground and get that done? You know when they're going to break ground and get that done?
Well, as far as breaking ground, they've mobilized, and their technically, time has started against them, and they, they have technically started, but I don't think they've really done a whole lot of work. So this week is the week.
There's three utilities, but I only think one's been kind of put to that red, still left.
I'm going to have to check on that, but I think that's right.
You're pretty sure that's right. There's still, no, two. There's two utilities still being done, kept at that rate.
These people that, the folks that own them?
Yeah, they're, the wheels are in motion, but they're...
I want you all to get up, because I had some pressure, but I'm just seeing traction. So we feel, we're going to be a hundred percent of that, so I will feel sorry for folks, and I appreciate it.
Anything else for the engineer?
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Nothing further.
Any questions, free inmate? Attorney to report, have no, anything to add?
No further.
Commissioner to report, anything to add?
They're official for about thirty minutes.
Okay. We'll do that at the end of the meeting, if that's a little, you can listen.
Okay.
All right. Administrator?
Okay, first of all, I have the website. If I would like to go ahead with that, we can suspend the rules, I'm voting on that tonight, but if you want to wait, we can wait.
I'm going to refer to Chad.
So the jail food thing, are we, are we, are we going to do that?
Yes, that will also be something that I'll ask you, just to spend the rules.
Yeah. All right, so that's the two things that are on the new business that we need to practice, that's it. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to suspend the rules, go on the website, social media, and jail food.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Cope, and seconded by Commissioner Berry, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, now we need a motion to...
And you'll need to separate those motions.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow Sheriff's Department to bid out the food as listed in this number.
Motion by Commissioner Cope, and seconded by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, and we'll move on to the jail food. We need a motion and answer.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow Sheriff's Department to bid out the food as listed in this number.
Motion by Commissioner Cope, and seconded by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the personnel that's under my report on new business, we'll move that down to current business, and y'all will have something in your package for that at the next meeting. The, under current business, sorry, I had to find my place. The Pike County Emergency Management Communications District, I don't have anything on that at this time. Next would be the Pike County Jail.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve an off-site option, option two, in the presentation that we did about TCU, and gave TCU the phase two at this point.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Now a motion by Commissioner Cope, and seconded by Commissioner Johnson, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 No?
Yes.
Good, motion carries.
Next will be the Pike County Volunteer Firefighters Agreements. Right now, as I told you, we're still working on those, and we'll bring something to you once we have something on that. Let's see. The only other thing I think that y'all wanted to vote on would be the levies for the alcohol licensing.
Ready to go? Any opposed? By Commissioner Johnson?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cope, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Only other thing would be the executive session for good name and character, is that correct?
Any questions for the administrator? Okay, Commissioner Harris?
I make a motion that we go into executive session for this period again.
We need to suspend the rules. So the first motion for Commissioner Harris is to suspend the rules that's been seconded by Commissioner Johnson, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Commissioner Harris?
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
I mean, yes or no vote for this?
Oh, I thought, I thought it was you.
Okay, I didn't hear you. That motion carries. Now you can make your motion, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
I thought you heard me. I make a motion that we go into executive session for this period.
Okay. And I have a motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're in executive session for approximately thirty minutes.